Call the council meeting to order this regular council meeting at City Hall, February 6, 2018, 7:00 PM. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody this evening. Thanks for being here. Appreciate your time. And if we could have a blessing, appreciate it.
Father God, we're coming for you tonight with Thanksgiving for all that you've done for us. We ask for it as the city council meets tonight and deliberates on decisions that need to be made that would make the choice that would be best for the community. And Father, we just ask you for some precipitation. We need either rain or snow, as you are well aware. And so, Lord, we just ask you for that. And thank you for all that you have done. In Jesus' name, amen.
Any citizens' comments this evening?
Hi. My name's Gail Vire. I'm at the 407 East Line, and I've had some water breakage because of the weather, and my water dam is like that basis. And I just came to see if you guys could offset it or reduce it, whatever you can do to help me out. So, I am paying $1,300 for water.
Jeff, what do you have?
All I know is the guys went up there, and at the time, I think Gail was there, and she had known that it had broke. How long it had run? I don't know. You know, and of course, this time of year, when it's cold and that, I have no control over it either. So, you know, in the past, not to get into the business that you guys do, but in the past, they've strung the payments out for people. You know, it's up to the council to what they want to do. But we have to, when we do our yearly water reports, we have to log every bit of that water. So, you know, it's up to you guys what you want to do.
When did this happen? Did this break in your house, Gail?
Yeah, in my bathroom. It was everywhere.
I know. Jen, do you remember what day you called?
Day 18.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know Jen called. We saw, I think, I don't know how we noticed it, but Jen...
When I was doing meter readings, I noticed that it was outrageous. It was 243,000 gallons.
Ooh. Yeah.
So, I called her and made her aware that there was an issue. When I looked back, I saw that it had started spiking at the beginning of the year, back on the first, when we had all the cold weather.
Gail, how much was your bill again?
$1,300.
It's $1,371.43.
Yeah. Whatever she says.
Was that the whole bill or just the water?
That's the whole.
Here's the...
Oh, does this have the payment on it from Christmas?
She paid just now $47 a month.
The wa- just the water is $1,356.5.
Was this happening at the house you're living at?
Well, yes. Except since I've been sick, I've been staying with my daughter during the cold months.
What's council think?
Her average bill looks to be about between $70 and $80 a month.
Gail, I sympathize with you on this because I was also bringing something to council because about the same time that you were called, I was also notified, though my bill is significantly smaller than yours.
Right.
I only have to pay $61.38. All I was going to ask council is if to postpone this until Jeff's crew can figure out whether or not it was actually the meter itself. Jeff and his crew have changed out the meter, and Jennifer is going to be monitoring my water here for the next month. And if it turns out that it is something, which I've been underneath my house, there are no leaks, just not to say that there's no leak elsewhere that I can't see. But I would like to hold off on paying this until we can confirm that it is actually something that is coming from mine. So, that's my only issue. However, going back to Ms. Vire over here, Gail, can you... Is there any... Can you... I won't even ask that.
I mean, with council's approval, I think that, like, our payment agreements now are... Do they go into four or five different months? Four or five payments?
It's depending on how much your bill is. Like, if your bill's $400, you can break it down into four payments.
So, I mean, maybe we could extend a payment agreement with your guys' approval?
Would that help you out?
Yeah. I mean, I can't... There's no way I can pay $1,300 all at once.
Right, right.
How many gallons is this?
243,000.
All in the bathroom?
Well, from the breaks underneath the house and in the bathroom. I just noticed the break in the bathroom when I went in.
What building period is this from, then?
This would be December 15 through January 15.
And then, when did you realize it was... You noticed it on the...
I noticed it when I ran the meter report.
Which is when?
We ran it on the... I ran it on the 6th... No, 17th, and called her the morning of the 18th when I found it.
This month, so...
Mm-hmm.
Aren't we supposed to have some type of program that will alert us?
We're in the middle of finding out what's going on.
We've been...
I have not been replied to.
Because this was the whole deal with these meters, is this... That these meters were supposed to prevent this type of thing from happening.
I don't know that it would prevent it, but it would sure, like you saw, it should throw a flag.
Right.
And that's where I'm at right now. We're caught in the middle of a salesman that left, and I can't seem to hit the bottom of who I need to talk to. I've talked with the tech guy out of Kansas City. He's trying to find somebody that can help me. So, he thought maybe it might even be a deal that we might have to reprogram him. You know, we went through that after we had that billing issue...
Right.
Where the zero wasn't, or the decimal wasn't where it was supposed to be. And we thought it was all done, but...
I actually...
This has been a trial by fire, dude.
I went through all the original documents, and I couldn't find anything in the original documents that stated that that would be a part of anything.
And I didn't either. And that's where we're at.
And I did call Ladonna, just because she was here, and just kind of asked her if she's remembering the same way. And she does remember them selling it as this is going to be something that can happen, but I don't know, like, I don't know if they were... Because we can go back and look. Like, we can go back and do the research and look. So, I don't know if there was some confusion on that, because I wasn't here. But, I mean, we can go do research on each meter. But, I mean, because Jen can go in and check for extra usage, but she'd have to go through every single meter in the city.
Right.
So, whether there's... But I didn't find anything on the original paperwork.
I just know that the salesman that was here had sold us on that one little feature.
Well, there was quite a few, but that was one of the highlights that we liked the best, was the fact that, you know, if it got extreme, that it would show us. And I've gotten ahold of my Wesco salesman out of Kansas City, and he's doing the hunting now. So, I hope to have an answer. You know, I haven't yet. He has not called me back. I called him early last week, Monday or Tuesday. And so, I don't know. I have no answer for you.
All right. Oh, what does council think about it? How long can we extend it for, Ms. Vire over here?
What was the bill? Average bill is what?
70 to $80, she said.
Yeah, she pays about 70 to 80.
I guess I would advise you, if you're maybe not living in the house, to, you know, maybe make sure you shut the... Have the city shut the water off.
Water's off now.
Right.
And I figured, I was going to start repairing the damage, but I figured I'd wait till March now, because they said, "We're going to get cold, and it's going to get hot, and it's going to get cold." And I don't want to do this again.
Do you have any idea what you could realistically afford?
$70 extra a month is realistic as I can get.
I mean, as where you guys are reviewing this on a case-by-case basis, I mean, you can make the rules that you want, but you're setting your standard. So, I mean, obviously, we want to try to do the best that we can to help.
$75 takes it to what? About 17 months?
18.
I kind of advised everybody that, yeah, when we got these new meters, that we're going to go back to... That's not our responsibility.
Right.
You know, that's... Yeah, I feel for you, but I don't know. We're going to have a lot more of these, and...
Right.
And we've had several phone calls already with this billing period, for some reason. I mean, there's been several leaks and several phone calls, and I sent out a reminder that it is December 15 through January 15, because I think having that lag billing period maybe confuses someone. I don't know. Because, I mean, that was the holidays, and then you got your cold snap. And, I mean, it's been pretty off and on cold, I guess, but...
What's council think? I don't know how many payments to stretch it out to, I guess. You can, you know, if you want to allow it to go 12 payments, 18 payments, miss a payment, it's an all-in-voyed amount due, I mean, what do you guys think? I mean, obviously, that's a lot, a lot to ask, but...
I realize it's a lot to ask of you on this, and we'd like to help you out as much as possible. If we can stretch it out to 18 months, again, it's up to council. But as the mayor just stated, you know, if you miss a payment, there's nothing we can do about that, you know? And I understand, you know, where you're coming from on this. You know, I sympathize with you. I don't have a problem with you paying $75 a month for 18 months, but again, it's not my whole decision, it's council's. So, whatever council thinks.
Jamie, what's your recommendation? I mean, you're... This is your office, and you guys have to deal with the public on a daily basis. Is this going to... You know, what's this going to create for you guys? Do you see anything from your guys' side that would factor in our decision here?
I mean, first and foremost, my biggest issue is when Jen called, she stated she knew about the leak, and we had no phone call about...
No, I did not say that. I said I knew that there was probably going to be a leak because of the minus 18-degree weather, but I did not know there was a leak.
But we never got a phone call to turn it off or anything until...
Yeah, I told her to turn it off. And I stayed down there and waited for an hour, and nobody showed up, so I had someone else turn it off.
Is that when you called you?
Yes, I called you, and you shut it off. Because you called me when you did it. Yeah. I'm not getting those...
I would just save $75 a month until it's paid off, is what I would...
What's our regular payment agreement? So, their bill has to be current, correct?
Yep.
They have to pay the current bill plus the $75.
Well, we can put her on the payment agreement, and then I'll have Jen maybe make an additional one that says... Does that say... Does that state?
It states that she agrees to pay the current bill by the 15th.
Right. But I think if... We need to put something on a new form saying that if she misses one of the payment agreements that...
It nulls it.
It nulls it. An all-in-voyed, and the whole amount becomes due. So, we can get that...
Yeah, it says that on here.
The full amount? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, we can get that going?
Must be paid in full, and will not be able to be back on any agreement for a year. And that's pay that plus the connect fees upfront.
I'm fine with that.
That's fine with me.
Can we do that now, so I don't have to get out tomorrow?
Okay. I'd entertain a motion, guys, to allow the customer to pay $75 extra to the bill for the amount of 18 months, or whichever it comes due on, with the payment agreement, and stating on that agreement that it will be... Payments will be made on time, and if they're missed, the total amount comes due.
So moved.
Motion on the second. All in favor? All opposed? Approve 4-0.
Now, before we move on, just with my problem alone, is it okay with council if I go ahead and just postpone my payment, that extra money that was on that, with the $16?
I'm fine with...
Okay.
Yeah, I still don't make sure it's not on the...
Right. As long as it's not on a meter, then...
This... I think this is what I'm going to do, Mark. I have a guy that I buy water products from down Pratt. I don't have anybody close that tests water meters. But I do have a guy that I buy through down at Pratt, and I'm going to call him tomorrow and see if he has somebody that will test that meter and make sure it's calibrated and it's right.
Okay.
While we're talking about this, I've got a couple others. We've, you know, of course, when the weather gets cold, everybody gets twisted because the bills get high, you know? And I forgot that I let my electric heater on for three days, that kind of stuff. But here's what I wanted to say was that... And I'm going to call a guy in Bueller tomorrow. We have a guy that tests electric meters, or he did. And I've got two people right now that are complaining about it. But what the policy has been in the past, and it's not a written policy, we just did it by what they charged us to test the meters. On a single-phase meter, it was $50 to have it tested. On a three-phase meter, it was $100. And the reason is, they charge us 35 for a residential meter, and we have to haul it to Bueller and back. A three-phase meter takes about twice as long. It costs about 60 bucks. And I have one right now that's what we call a 13-terminal or a current transponderated meter, that I'm going to run down and have tested. But if the meter is accurate, then the customer has to pay that.
Right.
And if it's not, then we'll take the accuracy that it's off, and then we'll figure the bill out that way.
Sounds good.
And I'll find out what I can do on the water meters.
Sounds good. Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
I appreciate everything that your crew has done, for me, at least. I appreciate everything. You guys do a good job.
You're more than welcome. This time of year, it's tough. I mean, I know it's tough. I had a water leak at my house here a while back. You just swallow it, you know? I mean, I didn't know it was there either, but it was a rude surprise, but anyway. But we deal with them on a case-by-case basis, but, you know, people have to... And that's the thing, I'm glad the girls granted that in there, that it was, you know, this is 45 days back, is when it started. And people seem to forget that it was zero for 10 days, you know? Truck heaters, electric heaters in your house, stuff like that, they'll make your meter spin. We're in the business of selling revenue, you know?
You got that right.
So, we like it, but some people don't.
Exactly.
But anyway.
So, the consensus, then, is to allow Mark to postpone the water until Jeff is good? Everybody's okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any more citizens' comments?
Thank you, guys. I'm just...
Moving on to the consent agenda. Approve the regular council meeting minutes, January 16, 2018. Appropriation ordinance, 2-6-18, and the amount of $80,291.45, and then petty cash, 210.01.
I'd like to comment on the petty cash. We're going to, I think, I think it's stated that we're going to keep $500 in that. So, on all of these, we're just going to show you how much that we're transferring over to the petty cash account. So, that's what that is. I just don't know how it was done in the past, so we just decided to put it there for you guys. That's how it was done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Move to approve a consent agenda?
Set. Motion on the second. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? 4-0. Okay, moving on. Grocery store, Stafford County Economic Development. Ashley's here to kind of give us a little report.
Absolutely. So, for those of you that don't know who I am, I'm Ashley Bevan. I'm our program director in the Economic Development Office. Carolyn had intended to come tonight, but had a personal conflict, so I decided to come in her place. What I've given council is the exact same press release that we have sent to the Grape vine Tribune, the Pratt paper to put in the St. John News, hopefully tomorrow. We will have a grocery store that will be opening in September, out at the intersection of Fifth Avenue and 281 Highway. As you can see, there's kind of a general outline here. This month, they'll be moving dirt. I think that's like a three-week process. Kansas Dirt will be doing that. Site Utilities and Begin Pouring Concrete, beginning of March. Beginning of April, Place the Underground Fuel Station Aspects. Beginning of May, the metal building will begin erected. Beginning of June, Interior Finish Work Begins. And then, mid-September, White Spoonliner and Stafford County Drugs should be open out there. We are using J.A. Knight and Sons out of Pratt as our general contractor, and he has a list of all of our local contractors to use for subcontracting work. Also, in addition to that, Monday, the 19th, at 5:30, we would like to invite the city council for groundbreaking. We want to take some photos, the shovel pictures, get the excitement going. And then, following that, we're going to come back down here to Tiger Town Pizza and have reception. But all of you are invited, and you can bring a guest as well. Let us know as soon as possible how many of you plan to attend, so we can get the pizzas ordered. I guess, do you guys have any questions in addition to what I've provided?
No. I don't think so.
We have plans here soon to put two big signs out there of the project's location. We're waiting on the architect to give us an accurate rendering of the front of the building, and then we'll have one sign specifically with donors, so...
If you guys just want to let me know, and I can get with them, so there's nothing...
There may be a building permit filled out before you start construction?
Yeah. I'm assuming Carolyn is fully aware. She's the one really handling that, so...
For the camera, and for those that are watching, you said May, or February 19 is going to be the groundbreaking?
Yes. February 19 at 5:30, there'll be a groundbreaking out there, and then we're having a reception for individuals and organizations that have been directly involved in the project.
I was more concerned about the 5:30 PM...
Yep. Yep. It's our intended time to do the groundbreaking, so...
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, you have any other questions, don't hesitate to call the office and stop by.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Department head and committee reports. Brand administrator Lisa Cornwell not here. Anything from her?
Jeff and Lisa and I sat down... Was it last week we sat down with Lisa?
Yeah.
We...
Thursday or Friday? I don't remember.
Yeah. Lisa and I kind of went over the safe routes to school stuff, and then we discussed the Golden Belt Foundation grant. Is that...
Golden Belt Community Foundation.
Yes. They're kind of working with us to apply... Well, we're in the process of trying to figure out what we can apply for, to fix our pool and go forward on... We're kind of looking at a splash pad option, if the grant is available. So, Jeff and Lisa and I have been working on that.
David and I are going to go to Ellenwood tomorrow and look at one and talk to them up there a little bit about the ones that they've done, and see what kind of money we're talking about, what it kind of entails, some of that, so...
And I think that on top of that one, there is an opportunity for another one that would be able to... Another grant that would be able to help us with the same thing. So, that's just something that's been in the works, to keep you guys updated on what we've been working on with that, so...
What about the safe routes to school? I mean, did you talk about that much? Just curious.
She's still going forward with everything. We didn't have... I need to get back with her. We didn't have any... We had it in the newspaper for engineer, and we had no one respond. So, she had someone in mind, and I just need to check with John to make sure that we can go forward with the... Well, he contacted us, I guess. It was before we even put out the newspaper article. He had contacted us about doing the safe routes to school, and he's done several other ones. So, I just needed to make sure with the city attorney that everything was going to be okay, using him, since it wasn't really a... Since we had no response, I guess, from the newspaper.
And then, we can jump on to the police report. Adam is at training. Someone was supposed to be here in his place, but of course...
Yeah, I think Aaron was supposed to be here.
Had to go on call or something. Okay.
He gave you guys the letter. I really don't know much about it to present anything to you. I was under the impression that Aaron was going to be here.
We can call Adam. He said to call him, but I don't know how fast he's hitting what he's needing.
I've got questions about it, but I would just soon discuss it when one of them's here. I can answer them.
Right.
So, I guess let's just put it on the next meeting.
Business?
Yeah.
Consensus to move the roll gauge down to old business?
Yeah, while I've talked to Chief Saylor, it'd be best to just go ahead and just have him here and answer all the questions.
Yeah.
Moving on. Fire chief report.
I'll hear you.
Okay. Very good. Jamie.
Okay. What do I have for you guys?
Scrap in.
Okay. So, first and foremost, David and I have sat down, and I've kind of talked to Jeff a little bit about this Tree City USA stuff. I got an email from some guy involved with this, and it's the 2017 Tree City USA that has not been completed. I don't know if it goes like a year back, but David and I asked David to come in, since that's kind of what we discussed, was he was going to take over this stuff, and we kind of sat down and looked at it, and we're at a loss. I mean, so, I told him that I'm going to bring it to you guys to make sure this is something you even want to continue before we sit down and try to figure it out, because it is a lot of work. And if you would like me to do it, we will get it figured out, but I don't want to waste my time if it's something that's not needed.
What are the benefits from this designation, other than the plaque that says...
A sign out here on these four.
Says we've been Tree City USA for 20-some years.
I honestly would have to look into that. I mean, I know we get like a plaque...
And a big sticker to put on the sign out there.
I do know that, from my understanding, applying for this has a lot of hoops and... Which I'll jump through every single one of them if you guys want me to, but I want the confirmation of you want this before we spend probably at least half a day figuring it out.
I wonder if maybe you could have Barry just come in next council meeting and explain what it is.
He won't do it. He resigned.
He resigned his position.
No, I mean, just to inform us of what it even is. I mean...
If you'd be willing to do that.
Or maybe you could talk to him and find out what it is.
I'd just like to keep the streak going. We've been at it this long, and I just... I'd like to keep doing it.
Certainly something that we've done for a long time, and if the benefits are there, I mean, you know, is this an organization where if a tornado blows through your town, they come out and help you replace tree... I mean, what are the things that they can... They could possibly help you with, and that's something huge that, I mean...
I mean, if it's a plaque and a sticker, I'm not wasting our employees' times, time to do all the paperwork.
So, did Barry take care of this before?
I'm assuming, yes.
I think it's even like events, and like, he brought in those birdhouses. I think it's even like events and like he brought in those birdhouses, I think he does like color content, like, I mean, it's a pretty involved thing. So that's something we need to.
I would maybe do a little research on it and find out what it entails, but.
Just to-
Benefits and-
Yeah, find out if it's even worth our time.
Okay.
I mean, I know our guys are busy and have their things to do, but that's why we had someone designated to do it. It was kind of the push to say forget them and so, I mean, obviously if we have a volunteer that'd be willing to do it, I'd entertain a volunteer to come in and fill out, fill out, you know, do the paperwork and do the events and assist the guys with, you know. With all the goods there, but.
Okay.
I'll get, I'll get with Jamie and, oh, I'm sorry.
All right, I heard comments in the back.
I'll get with Jamie and find out what it, what this thing is and see what's been done in the past. Maybe I can talk to Barry and get information from him.
Yeah, okay.
That'd be great, appreciate you.
A few things that have been brought to my attention that I, I guess, was not thinking about. Citywide cleanup, I reminded our citizens that we do have that dumpster down by the power plant that they can take stuff yearly. We are starting to look at dates for citywide cleanup, so I will be getting those to you. And then I've been kind of, the rabies clinic, I mean, that's like five to seven hundred dollars a year. I don't, is that something that the city is needing, needing to do?
Like it's kind of a nice tool to have for the people that can't go, you know.
It's just something we've been doing for quite a while.
Right, it's something that we've already done.
It's something we always do, so why change it, right?
Right, right, no, 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 it's not. But it's something that we have provided as a city, I mean, if we're, if we're out there trying, we don't have a vet's office in town and we're out there trying to tell people your animals have to be vaccinated. So we require that they have to go out of town to get it done. It's kind of nice to have that annual.
There's a vet service in Stafford and a mobile vet that comes around.
Right, so maybe we outsource it in that event where we go, hey, this date, this mobile vet will be here, come on up and get it done. Maybe they can offer a better, you know, a cheaper deal, maybe this, maybe even the city says, we'll offset some of that cost for you to come and provide shots.
Just the actual shot itself, right?
Right, so I mean.
Because I think Jim.
Well, I know last year, I think there was fifty-three people on the list and the bill was about five hundred dollars. Ten bucks a vaccination?
I know, I was in the office the day that Bruce Figer came in and he was talking about, you know, he's, he's, he's doing a mobile vet thing and if we needed anything, he'd be willing to help. So I don't know if, if Jim can continue to do what he's doing, if that's not an issue or if we can look for someone else.
Talk to Jim if he's going to be willing to do that this year.
Yeah, I think he is.
I mean, because he pretty much donates his time and just charges for the, I mean.
I, I think it's a good service to the community.
I think you just leave him alone and do it.
I would love to.
Sorry.
I'm just making sure. What else did I have? An update on Jubilee. If you guys want to continue help pushing all of the events, we're definitely looking for sponsors. We've had several that have stepped up and sponsored big time, so that's awesome. Marshall, we are extending it onto Saturday night, so we have a band Friday and Saturday. I don't know if any of you, all of you have been keeping up with my posts on Facebook, but we have the two bands, we have a monster truck coming. So to sponsor that, it's a hundred dollars and then you get twenty-five tickets for rides to pass out.
What's it cost to have them here?
A lot. I need sponsors to help, help get that taken care of. They're going to be here Friday and Saturday.
Sell more tires.
You could probably do a hundred dollar sponsorship and give them all to your kids.
So what are you getting at? You're just trying to get ideas for more sponsorship, is that what?
Yeah, and just letting you guys know what's going on. I have a cornhole tournament being arranged. We're looking at doing a burnout competition. We're, we're going big this year, so if you guys have any questions.
What city street are we doing that on?
Yeah, which one is next?
Probably over west to the old fire station, probably where we'll do it.
I already got permission.
Permission comes from them guys sitting at the table.
Well, I got the superintendent's permission.
Which don't stand up in court, I tell you.
From what I've heard from the citizens in this town about how much more stuff's going on for Jubilee, they're all excited. Do what you got to do.
You mentioned monster truck over at the high school, oh man, they're going crazy over there, they love it, they love the idea.
I did hear one concern, people were wanting to know what the prize money was for the burnout contest.
I haven't got that far, do you like sponsoring?
Well, they said they got to burn a couple hundred dollars worth of tires, they want a big prize.
If they need some cheap used tires, I can look them up.
Don't bring them back.
Can't bring them back.
I'm still, I've been doing a lot of research on burnout competitions here lately, so I'm still trying to get all of that squared away, but.
Well, just.
Eventually we'll be getting it all.
If you're excited for everything you're doing, just don't spread yourself thin or hopefully you have enough volunteers. It's very, it's exciting, so.
People are excited you're doing all of this really good.
I'm sure she's probably checking on it.
I should say all of this pending insurance approval, right? They're signing a waiver.
Waivers.
They have a waiver on everything.
Yeah, as long as you, yeah, as long as the city is up.
Work, yeah, work with John on that, make sure it works good.
Well, appreciate all your hard work.
Yeah, and I think, I don't think I have anything else under me.
Why don't you bring up the deal when that contract is sitting there in front of you, isn't it?
There is a contract between Midwest Tank Company Incorporated, I heard them talking back dating in the nineties.
Ninety or ninety-one.
Nineteen ninety.
We weren't even aware we had it.
We pay, what'd you say, five thousand dollars a month?
This last one was fifty-two eighteen or something, I think.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
Just to come check the.
Crawl up to Tower Peak in the lid and come back down.
Five thousand dollars a year, so Jeff found a company that can do it for fifteen hundred every other year.
I didn't know we were doing it until we got the bill on it. And then I was gone the day that those guys were here, but David was here and he said they weren't here thirty minutes. They bailed up the side of the tower, poked their head in the lid.
Backed down and charged us five grand?
And they charged us five grand a year. I'd signed an agreement with Maguire Tank earlier in the fall.
I just need signature from mayor and three council to send saying we don't want you guys anymore.
But what's the deal with the new one that you found?
They crawled in, we drained the tower, we checked it, we went through it, they charged fifteen fifty for every other year to inspect it.
And that's all you, it's called?
As long, as long as it doesn't need any maintenance, you know, now the maintenance comes on top of that. In fact, I've got a phone call into the salesman at Hillsborough right now because the state wants us to drop that overflow down within three feet of the ground. And Rick's looking into that, he happened to be in Hugaton when I called him the other day, so he came back through and looked at and I should have an estimate here in the next little while. That's a state mandate by the-
So does this just get us out of that contract, is that what that does?
Yep, yep, when that bill come in, I was shocked. I didn't know where it came from or, but.
Well, thanks for looking into it, getting a cheaper one.
Yeah, that was a five thousand dollar scare that I didn't know we had.
And that's every year they do that?
Every other year.
Every other year?
We cut their padlocks off so we could get in the tower.
Yeah, they had their own padlocks, we had bulk cut them off.
But we drained the tower, the day that Maguire came here, we shut the tower down and drained it and they, and they checked the inside of it. Kid went clear down in it, they worsted all the residual out, put the plug back in, checked it over. It was probably an hour, maybe a little more. Just inspecting the tower, same thing Maguire does.
Not like how many, how many years?
Since nineteen ninety.
It was, it was dated. Signed on the fourth of January of nineteen ninety. Remain constant.
Cost was supposed to be twenty-four fifty, but they could add fifteen percent every time they did it, add to fifteen percent, so that's what you got, the fifteen percent tax on, now it's five thousand.
Open contract.
Yeah. Never ending contract.
Yeah, let's close that one.
I'd like to have a few of those.
But you're a hundred percent sure they're, that this new company's doing the exact same thing?
Yep, yep, they all do the same thing.
Well, let's sign.
They all do the same thing.
I had an entertaining motion to terminate the water tank maintenance contract with Midwest Tank Company effective immediately.
So moved second.
Motion is second on the table. All in favor? All of those, four oh.
Thank you.
I do have one more thing.
And the consensus is to let Jeff use the other company and get that agreement ready.
We did it last fall.
It's already done?
Yep, it's been done.
So we didn't know this was your, okay, that's good.
They've already been here, in fact, yeah. Yep, they've already been here. It's every other year, I think through, I think it's a ten-year deal for every other year.
I do have one more. And I sent it to John and I'm just going to bring it up to you because it, I, I have it sent to John just to make sure I'm not reading it the way I want it to read. But ordinance number ten eighteen is an ordinance to allow the consumption of cereal beverage on public streets during special events. And the ordinance pretty much states that with council's approval, different, like, the code can change, like, but you guys have to approve it for special events. But I sent it to John to double check everything, so I will probably be bringing it to you guys next meeting, but to make you guys aware of it. Oh, is it Carolong Pottery? They did like the art show last year. They are talking about trying to get a tent and having it down here on the square instead of over at their building. And they are requesting inside the tent to have cheese and wine. So I told her that I would look into it and I found this ordinance, like I said, I'm having John double check and make sure it's not reading, you know, like I can read it and it, I want it to read that that would be okay. So he is going to be looking into that for us, but I just want to bring it to your attention so you guys can be thinking on that, because that is something that they're requesting. I talked to Nita and she said with your approval, we can just write a letter from council, the city, and take it to the county commissioners to get their approval, just because it is the county's land. So I don't want to do it without, I mean, I know we pretty much have the, I don't know how all that works, so I just want to make sure all of our.
Ducks are around.
Yep.
It's a good idea.
And I don't think it would require a license since it's just like wine tasting, it's not selling. So she, I don't think she would be required to have a, a license or anything.
Through the state?
Right, so.
Double check. How far will that lead? Do you appreciate anything else?
I don't think so, hopefully not.
Okay, Jeff?
I don't have anything.
Did you ever hear anything from Phil on West Street?
No, I did not. Phil's been gone, I noticed he's back, but I didn't, I hadn't been able to catch him. So I'll get with him, I'll try and catch him tomorrow, we'll talk about it.
See if we can have that for next meeting.
Okay.
That way maybe it'll solve some of our water drainage problem on.
Whenever it rains.
If it ever rains.
I'll see if I can catch you personally in the morning.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Anything from John?
I did get the deed back from the property on Second Street from the Sanders, I think was their last name. It's been months of her and I talking, she sent it back in December, she sent it and it never came and then she did it again, or no, it was the John made the, there was one number. So the second time she sent it back in December and it never came and then we got the mail today and it was in the mail, so that's finally over and we have it all. So he'll get that and take care of whatever going forward.
No old business, move into new business, the date of the first council meeting in March. I know Adam is gone today because he's attending the leadership training that a couple of the employees in council, mayor will be attending in March. And that first meeting is on the sixth, which, which is the first day of the training in Wichita. I also know that's an elementary PE program, so I'm sure pretty much everybody's out and down for the count, Jamie will be in Wichita for training as well. So would the council be willing to move that meeting since pretty much everybody has, probably has obligations at that time to Monday, the fifth or not have it at all, what's, what's the thought?
Fine with Monday, Monday's fine.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I bring up something here that I think you need to know? I wanted, I did not think about it during the citizen comment. The circles, people that are participating in the getting out of poverty, their graduation is scheduled for March the fifth at six thirty. And there will be others attending that, so just, just be aware of that and I wanted everybody to know it.
Certainly, okay. What's the consensus of the council on it?
Monday's fine.
Monday's fine with me.
Monday, seven?
I think I need a motion for a change.
So moved, second.
Motion is second, any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed, four oh. Okay, more new business, the window film quote on Dylan's building?
Yeah, Ryan and I, we're kind of talking about that, I think I gave it to you guys when I got it. I think that.
It's a lot of money.
We need, it is a lot of money and I do have, I have someone coming to, I sat down with someone yesterday and the company she works for, I guess, can do this as well. So I gave her on that, it said like two hundred and, two hundred and ninety-two square feet. And then I was going to politely ask one of the guys to go measure the windows so I could send the exact measurements of the windows to her so she can get us a quote. Unfortunately, she couldn't get it by tonight, but I'm definitely looking into it. I talked to Mrs. Binky, Miss Binky, Mrs. Binky. Today as well, they are pretty stacked up on work until the end of the year, so I don't know how quickly it would get done, wanting it to look better. So I'm definitely still looking into it. I would like, if it's okay with you guys, to get at least another quote to see if we can't get it a little bit cheaper than that twenty-three hundred dollars, because, I mean, we still don't know what we're doing with that building and.
What, what, what design was on that vinyl?
I think that was plain.
I mean, like, no, nothing?
Pretty sure it was plain.
Make it all one consistent wrap over the building.
And it's, I think it's the stuff with like the whole, I mean.
Perforation.
Yeah.
Right.
We just need to do something over there. I mean, and I don't know, I don't know the answer for it, I mean, I didn't realize it was going to cost this, but, I mean, we need to do something.
Well, I have.
As far as covering the windows, I mean, just.
Yeah, I have, it was Ada Welch that came up, we've been talking about advertising for Jubilee and we just kind of got talking on some other things. And she, she said something and I, I said that I was wanting to cover the windows and she made the comment that the company she worked for does that, so she's going to get us a quote. And then my sister just started a job actually at a marketing company that I was going to check with as well because they've been very low on their prices. I, I checked on buttons, I know last year for five hundred buttons for Jubilee, I think, was it two or three hundred dollars? Three hundred dollars for five hundred buttons is what was spent last year. And my sister quoted me a hundred and forty dollars for five hundred buttons, I think, so I'm going to check with them just to see, just to see, so.
Is there any kind of something you could do maybe with designing it that you could solicit some sponsorships, you know, like a?
Like businesses?
Visit stjohn.com, I don't know, I mean, something that could have a landscape on it. Somebody be willing to head up something, a social media page that has the different things to do, I mean, you know, you could do, really do anything, it's maybe a billboard in a sense.
You know, the idea I'd have would be to, you're going to get several, maybe two or three quotes for another vinyl company to come in. And another option I just kind of thought of was if we came up, could print up some big pictures of around St. John or Kansas and just put them up. And then behind that have a backdrop where you can't see in, just some, because that'd get a lot of people to go over there and look at old time pictures or really neat pictures somehow, get them. And that'd be a few, a few hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's something, for the button this year, we're going to be announcing. Yeah, that's something, um, for the button this year, we're gonna be announcing, um. That, like, I think Oktoberfest does it where people can submit their pictures. So we're gonna take pictures and then pick whatever is gonna be on the button. So I guess we could maybe look at those pictures. And go through it that way.
Just, just something, you know.
I just realized for that price, I was like, I figured they'd have some cool pictures or something. I'm gonna stop mowing lawns and stop making signs.
I can get, I can get, uh, quotes on like the size of the windows, how much it would be to print off pictures. Cuz that's what I was thinking for the art class, was to paint like Saint John murals and stuff, so.
Maybe check with the museum and see what kind of old downtown photos they have, you know?
Yeah.
And, and plaster looks up there.
If we did pictures, or even if we borrowed them, we, of course, have to take them back, but if, whether we do pictures. I mean, if we do that, we can't keep them up very long, cuz the sun will just beat them up. At least something for Jubilee. Let's just see what the quotes come in at.
Taylor, Taylor Pratt does it also, but it sounds like we got several quotes.
Yeah, I think that we've used them before as well.
You can't get contacts in emails.
Yeah, moving on to cancel prior year encumbrances.
Yeah, the, I think it was your last sheet in your packet. That's just everything we didn't use, and we need a motion to cancel it.
That just all reverts back into general theme, correct?
So whatever, um, it's coming out of.
What it's coming out of?
Yeah.
Okay.
It goes back to.
Do we need to do that as a total? Or just as a motion to cancel all of them?
I think just a motion to cancel all of them.
I would, uh, make a motion to cancel the prior year encumbrances. Of what is that, eighty-three thousand two seventy-two ninety-one?
Second that motion.
Yeah, a motion and a second on the table to cancel the unused encumbrances of eighty-three thousand two seventy-two ninety-one. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Yeah, I think I remember seeing it, yeah.
All opposed? Approves four oh. Next.
Uh, the wage analysis. Dakota and I, he came in a while ago and kinda talked about, um, looking at. He, what was, there, there's like a company that comes in, or?
Basically, what kinda other cities do is hire in a firm that looks at all positions. The kinda grade that we currently have, and, and where that should be. I know you guys, prior to the new council, had been kind of having issues or talking about it, and you guys were gonna get, you know, get going on, on something to figure things out, because we were having issues with raises or unfairness between departments and things like that. I don't know if we've, if we've ever had a wage analysis study done or not. I haven't had a lot of time to get with Jamie and look through things to see. But, um, you know, I know a lot of cities have, have done that. Um, it can be expensive. I don't know where you guys are on that or what you think. I mean. You know, when you're just sitting out there listening to the guys talk, and they go, you know, well, why is this guy get paid more than I do? I'm more important than this guy and that guy, and you, you listen to them, because, you know, you wanna know what they're thinking, but, um. You know, what do we base it on? What, do we have a basis? Do we have a chart? Do we have a system? Where do we start people at with, with experience and things like that? I mean, we can just say, oh, I like you, you're worth twenty-five dollars an hour, or, oh, no, I don't like you, you're worth fourteen dollars an hour. I mean, what? You know, um, I think it'd be worth looking into, maybe seeing if there's a firm or something that could do a, a wage analysis study over the city departments, and make sure we're getting our people what they should have.
Didn't we just, didn't Ben?
Bender and I, and I gave Dakota that information. That was a lot of us trying to find the information to go off of, like what the league publishes. And just contact with, uh, different city, like I, I compared the cities around our same population, so.
As I say, we just changed the, the policy on how we, the pay range on everybody after all the research that was done.
Before, yeah, what that, and that happened before I got here, right?
Yeah.
That was, that's matter of fact, just, just a little over a year.
Yeah.
Right, years last November.
I mean, I don't know. I know a lot of time went in to getting all them numbers, cuz it took three or four months to get all that stuff put together and.
Basically, this was done a year and some ago, basically.
Give or take, yeah.
I wouldn't, I don't think we should worry about it if it's been done.
Is there, is, they did this study, so is there an actual, do we have?
There's not, I don't think there was a study. I think she, she.
It's all based off of other municipalities.
So we have a system that we're going off of, is my point?
Yes.
We have a pay plan, yes.
Okay, so everybody's kosher with that plan. We're good. Cuz what I've heard from prior council meetings and city employees and people out there who pay the bills. They're like, what's going on here with just the, the discrepancies that have been had at meetings? Like, well, you know, we're gonna look into, you know, it, it was just a confusing phase for me, so. Been, and able to answer the questions when people say, well, do we have the system that we're happy with and following for our employees? I wanted to make sure that I can say, yes, we've, we've done the work, we're good to go.
Yeah, in fact, I've got it to where everybody, I mean, actually, there should be, there is one discrepancy, and we've never brought it up, but I've got it all lined out, and I've got everything at my shop of our pay plan with everybody that, in every position with the city, where they fall within it, and almost everybody, to the exception of one person. Falls either within the middle or well above the middle of their pay range. And, and some of them people are even newly hired, you know, a year or below over a year. They're in the middle, starting in the middle of those pay ranges. And I'd be more than glad to give it to Jamie, so we got it in packets next meeting. Like I said, to the exception of one person, and that probably needs to be addressed, but there are supervisors that take care of that, so.
Right, right.
I leave that up to them. But I'll give it to Jamie, and she can have it in the packet for everybody if you guys wanna look at it.
Yeah, great.
I mean, I've gone through and.
I, I, I've looked at it too, and, and based off of every single range, and I, I think it's for, especially for some of the guys that have been here for not very long, I think.
Yeah, I mean.
The area that, that designers.
But it breaks it down as far as basically your workers, your supervisors, your super, Jamie and Jeff and Adam and. I mean, it's got all them, they don't have the fire chief, but he don't need no money. He's a volunteer.
Very good.
But I'll give it to Jamie. Like I said, I, at the time, I had everybody's wage that they were making hourly rate beside it, so it kinda showed where they fell within it too.
Cool. Thanks, Marshall. Next, evaluations?
Adam had asked for evaluations, um, I think per Dakota, to, to give out to his guys to evaluate Adam. And per the handbook, it doesn't state that that is how it's done, so I just wanted approval from council to be able to do that.
What this goes back to is, and just having a chat with Adam, he had, uh, you know, I, I had made sure with the going through, I was going through my list and making sure that everybody had had their evaluation, because my position is to make sure that the department heads have their evaluations, and I wanna make sure everybody's had their evaluation. And Adam had kinda brought up that he wasn't sure if he had technically had one or not, so I said, okay, I'll look into it just to make sure. And I saw that we had one signed, and, and so we were good there. But he felt that, uh, you know, maybe we should, it wasn't filled out, it was just signed. Well, I don't, I don't personally consider that a valid evaluation, because how were you evaluated, you don't know. You should at least, and you guys discussed this probably at prior meetings, but I said, well, maybe it'd be a good idea if, you know, you got, if you're looking for that room to grow, I don't feel comfortable, since I'm new evaluating you at this moment. Maybe your guys could get together and do a little workshop and fill that out for you, so you have something to be constructive about. Since you had nothing from your last evaluation. Well, again, that's not technically the policy, but those guys work with him on a daily basis. And just for some good feedback purposes, I thought maybe it'd be a good exercise if they feel comfortable to do that for him. To say, hey, we think you are doing a good job. We think maybe we could have improvement here. And of course, it wouldn't be each of them doing it, it would be collectively as a group, so there wouldn't be the thought of backlash per person or something.
So there's anonymity within it?
Right. And so I don't know if something, that's something the council would like to do. I think our people do need to be evaluated. I think they do need to hear that feedback and see those things. How do you improve? How do you move towards your next raise? If you don't have anything there that says this is what's expected of you to go to the next step. You know, that's, uh, certainly how I, I will base my, my evaluations for my department heads. So I mean, I don't know, if you guys think it's a, a good thing to do and let them and talk to John, make sure that's okay, I don't know.
I don't, I don't know, and that's kind of my deal with the organism, organizational chart stuff. I don't know if it's good to have employees evaluate supervisors. But I think it's probably a good thing if the supervisors ask their employees for ideas of, of things to improve on, but I don't think you actually have an employee fill out an evaluation on a supervisor. That's not.
Well, I, I was just meaning like, based off the questions that are on there, pick out some questions and say, what can we approve on as a department?
Right, but I think that's why we put supervisors in place is to do those jobs with our employees. I mean, we as a council sit here and tell Jamie and Jeff, we want you to do this. We're advising you to do this.
He was just looking for direction from me on what to do, so that's why we're here.
But I think he could probably have that discussion with his guys without having, I mean, as, as a supervisor, as any supervisor, if you can't talk to your guys and ask for them to either give you ideas or criticize you, or.
Right, instructive criticism.
You know, I mean, if you can't do that, then we don't need you in them positions anyway. That's how I feel. I, as far as the evaluation forms, I think those are for you to fill out. Add their anniversary dates, um, on the supervisors. And in the same way with supervisors, it's for them to fill out on the employees.
Yeah, I think that's why it needs to be.
I mean, that's, we don't, as, as city council, we don't, we don't evaluate anybody.
Right.
You know, but we give direction to the supervisors and, and they follow our direction. If we tell them to do something, that's what. You know? And then I guess you get to kind of double check and make sure we're doing what we tell them to.
Right. So just, um, in a nutshell, just to let Adam know, hey. Sit down and talk with your guys.
That's what I would say. I mean, more than anything. I'd say that to all the supervisors.
Well, of course, but where we go back to the issue of his evaluation.
I, I realize his evaluation was.
It's a prior deal.
But it also got brought to, like, it also, he also had the chance to, to discuss that.
So.
You know, we left it up to him at the time of his evaluation, that if he needed justification or wanted something that him and the mayor needed to work that out at the time. Whether they did or not, I don't know. That was the direction we had given them at the time, if I remember right.
Very good. That's, that's more than enough for me. I just wanted to make sure we were on the right page, right track, everybody on the, the same note here with this, because again, um. I wanna make sure we're doing it the right way, and when someone asks me a question, I don't want the answer, I wanna make sure I get the right answer for them. So, very good. Next.
Organizational charts.
I think I covered some of that.
Well, I do have an issue.
Unless you got something.
I do. I printed off the City of Saint John organizational chart, and council's not even on it. So I do feel like that's something that probably needs to be addressed.
But that's not how it's set up anyway. If you go off of the charter ordinance.
Oh, it's not citizens' council. It's not citizens' council.
You just said council wasn't even on it.
Yeah. Council's not on this.
On the one that, yeah. But by, by charter ordinance, that's how it's. If you look at, look at how the City of Saint John's actually run, it's, it's actually the council and mayor, and we direct the supervisors. We direct you and Jeff and Adam.
Right.
And Dakota makes sure that you guys are doing what we tell you to do, and he oversees the, I think it's the police chief and the fire chief, the district judge, or the municipal judge, and the attorney.
Okay. Well, I will do some double checking on that, cuz all the other organizational charts with similar cities still has council, but I didn't look at their code or.
I think it's actually the charter ordinance is how it's all, it's based off of how the state sets it up. They give you certain ways you can run your city. You can have it to where it is five council members, a city administrator, no mayor. They've got it the way we have it, which is a city council and a mayor, and then there's one other way. If you talk to John, John knows. I've had this discussion with him before.
Okay, I will, because everything that I looked into still had council, like, cuz you're above everything.
Right. Basically, it's the citizens that put us here, and then it's us.
And then city attorney, mayor, and municipal judge, but you're not on this one, is what I'm saying.
Well, I'm not, I'm just saying that according to the charter ordinance, that's how it should be.
Okay, and maybe this just wasn't, cuz I think this was redone, so maybe it just didn't get, I mean, it's one little line that's missing, but. As I'm going through everything, making everything right, I wanna make sure that we're having it right, so.
I'd say Jeff and John.
Yeah, yeah, John can tell you for sure, but I know I've spoken to him in the past about it. So.
Well, I won't worry about that, but I do have one more thing. Ryan is officially not an alternate for KMEA, and I need a new one.
Why is he not?
I don't know, his term expired? I got an email.
Boy, can't do it again, can't he?
Yeah.
I didn't do anything last year for it, so I guess I'll do it next year, this year.
Perfect. Great. Oh, maybe a motion, just to be.
So moved.
Second. Okay, a motion and a second on the table to appoint Mr. Ryan Christie. You were awful quick on that. Any more discussion? All in favor?
I heard a train was on if you arrived.
That's what happens when you just sit there.
I had to pull the trigger, make sure I wasn't the one foot on it. Oh, that's rough.
Entertain a motion, will you?
I have one question here, I guess. Do we have a full zoning board?
Uh, no. We have three members on the zoning board. We're supposed to meet at five forty-five tonight, but Amy couldn't make it, and Alvin was sick. So we should be meeting Tuesday, and they are supposed to be bringing me names, uh, to appoint two more members. And then we're gonna have to reelect, um, our president, because he decided to become a council member, so we're down and out. So they're supposed to be bringing me. So, they're supposed to be bringing me, or not bringing me, I guess. They're bringing it to the table when they meet. And I plan on bringing it to next meeting.
Ray, didn't you volunteer to be on this?
Yeah, I did, but they're the other names. Yeah, I just asked that my name be put in the hat.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll definitely take that to the table.
Well, my only question was with that, that ground out there, had they got all that?
No, I've been waiting on Amy, so I just need her, I wanted her to double check everything. Since I've not done anything like this, I want to make sure that everything is squared away correct before I submit anything.
We would, what's gonna be?
Like the legals and...
To get it zoned industrial?
Yes, right.
Have we looked into anything after that, what to do? We just want to have it available so when somebody wants to put something out there?
Yeah, I mean, you don't have an industrial lot that's not zoned to be anything more residential and do any good for anyone.
We don't have any access on the south side of that property at all at this time.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I don't find an issue with just coming off of, what is that, up north?
I mean, the thing is, is just like the...
Yeah, when we rezoned it, we took some properties that when they get removed will not go back residential. But the ones that are there now will stay. But to the east of our water plant, that will all become industrial from there. And then north up into the stuff that the city owns. But the other properties to the west will stay residential like they are. So, we didn't really encroach on it a lot enough to get access from the south side into those properties and be able to get utilities up in there.
Okay.
So, we didn't get real greedy just enough to, just enough to kind of square it off and make it, you know, something that was easily accessible for utility stuff too, so...
I don't know, I just, I felt like we should be doing something as far as our utilities, running them out there and maybe advertising with incentives to get people out there. I mean, it sounds to me like we just got laid and we're waiting on somebody.
Well, I'm fine with that, but you gotta have it zoned right before you start offering something.
You know, just having it ready.
The ESPN is helping us out, get McDonald's in St. John, they said.
Well, yeah.
Well, it's one step at a time, but...
Thank you, Roger.
I just don't want it to be dropped and not done.
No.
No, we had it all ready and then Jamie came to me and told me that we were short too because Alvin was sick and we were gonna do it tonight before you guys met. We just didn't have, didn't have the people.
Okay.
So...
No other business, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed, three one.